That was subtle, wasn't it? Okay. So. Got everybody down, okay. So I'd like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land on which we are gathered, and pay my respects to elders past, present, and emerging. Welcome to the City Infrastructure Committee meeting of 20 April 2021. I declare the meeting open at 11:24am. Apologies for the one-minute delay, but I needed chocolate. I'd like to advise meeting attendees that this meeting is being webcasted and audio-recorded. For leave of absence, we had a leave of absence for councillor Mindy Russell, Division Three. Councillor Bradley, Division One, was in the last committee meeting. She did have several coffee fits, and I did ask her whether she was feeling well. She's not 100%, so I did ask her to consider whether she would leave this committee round, and she has. So we've got councillor Russell and councillor Bradley. Councillor Fraser is attending to personal family business. So can I please have a second for those absences? Councillor Raven, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you very much for those leave of absence. Now, I'll refer to item 4.1. Can the Director of Innovation and City Transformation, Dr Scott Burke, please enter the discussions? But before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? There being none, I now refer to the Director of Innovation and City Transformation to open public discussion. Dr Burke, you may proceed.
Through the chair, if I can refer to my program leader, Kirsten Peetzen, to provide an overview of the report.
Through you, Madam Chair. We provided an update on inland rail. It's been a longstanding advocacy objective of council to ensure that Logan residents
Obviously, we don't make the decision, but I guess for us to understand where they're coming from, we could possibly ask whether it be, whether it be the ARTC to actually come in and explain, or to maybe the federal member, minister, or representative of the federal government to explain to us the rationale. Because I was, I missed much of the radio interview that was on recently, and he did, that question was put to the CEO of the ARTC and apparently explained it, but I never got to hear that. So I'm very interested to know the reason for it and the reason against it. But I think there is a, there is a underlying economic reasoning for it. But I would suggest we write a letter. I'll, well, I'll get, I'll prepare a letter and see what they put to us, and then we'll work a strategy around that.
You happy with that, councillor Wilcox? Thank you very much. Councillor Raven, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just caution councillors' enthusiasm about engaging with the Coordinator General. A coordinated project is a project that the state wants to see delivered rapidly. So if it becomes a coordinated project by by opposition, you've got nothing. Because then you really do have an independent statutory authority whose job it is to deliver projects that have stalled moving quickly. Now, I accept that you'll get an EIS, an independent EIS, and I'm sure that'll be much better than having one run by ARTC. But if the Coordinator General might declare this as a coordinated project, you can just stand back and watch it get delivered as fast as it possibly can be, because that is her job. That is what the purpose of her office is. So I'd just be wary about following up with her to find out how soon she can make a decision, unless you're hoping she's going to make a decision not to coordinate it, which would be great. I fully encourage the idea of engaging with councils further up through central and northern Queensland that may be interested in having the inland rail running to their ports. I know that when councillor Herramire and I attended LGAQ Conference last year, there was great support from the mayors that were from up in that area who were very enthusiastic about advocating. And I would suggest the best way to bring them together quickly, because time is of the essence on this one. The best way to bring them together quickly, especially in the lead up to a federal election, would be by organising a digital catch-up with those mayors. And if you want to use LGAQ to coordinate that, I'm sure they'd be supportive of that. Because that is their role to link mayors from all over the state together to advocate with a louder voice. I can't remember, Kirsten, and given your previous employment, you're very useful to have in the room at the moment. Is there an LGAQ?
Title please, deputy mayor.
Is it, sorry, sorry, to the program leader. Is there a standing LGAQ motion in regards to this?
Not that I'm aware of. Having spoken to the Chief of Staff, Comsec couldn't come to any agreed position in relation to this. And I don't, how to put it, LGAQ generally avoids advocating for particular projects.
Okay, so in that case, we're probably, there's, the regional councils have ROCs, which I can't remember what they stand for, I'm sure the program leader will remind me.
Regional Organisation of Councils. So there is a Central Queensland Regional Organisation of Councils that would cover some of these councils.
So you might want to reach out to those ROCs as you're connecting bodies and engage with them, because then you get, the whole region would benefit from inland rail going through there, not just the councils that specifically have the rail going through their land, but the councils that would benefit economically from having easier access to ports and also being able to provide local content through the construction. But if you, I think it's a good idea to advocate for it, and I think it's a different angle to approach. So far, the mayor and councillor Wilcox have been very effective at raising our objections, but we haven't been providing alternatives. This actually provides an alternative solution that you can put to both sides of politics in the lead up to the federal election, and with the support of a number of councils all through Queensland, who are some of the biggest councils in the country, I think you'd have a very loud voice. And I'm sure that councillor Herramire and I would be happy to advocate for you through LGAQ on your behalf.
Councillor Wilcox, I could see you chomping at the bit.
Sorry, yes, I am very wary about putting a letter towards the Coordinator General, because yes, I was thinking that that would push it along in a negative manner and that sort of thing. So I think if we could push for a meeting with everyone along from the border up to Gladstone first, before we put in that EIS coordinator letter, sorry, losing my train of thought. I would like that. I would definitely like to set up teams, something with everyone along the route, so that we could get some sort of advice, comments from everyone else. Because I think our voice will be a lot louder if we can get support from all the other councils, councillors, state members, everything like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Herramire?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in support of this recommendation that calls on the state government's coordinator general to make a decision regarding that application. But what I'm not in support of is some of the comments that have been made in this room today. Things like questioning whether the federal government can do anything. Now, what I know the federal government can do is support our city. When I go door knocking in my electorate, I see people in jobs, I see people buying houses, I see people in strong economic times. Without the federal government's actions over the past year, we would not have that support in our city. Our economy would be in a completely different state. We need to be respectful and courteous to all politicians, to all of our colleagues. The federal government has champions in it that are backing our city, that are supporting our city. Now, this report calls on the state government's coordinator general to make a decision, and I hope that the state government's coordinator general does make that decision in an appropriate amount of time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Herramire. So I do have a question or two, if that's okay. Could you possibly ask the advocacy team members that are attending those local events and local community consultations to actually make themselves known to councillors? I think that would be very helpful, and that councillors won't feel like they're by themselves at those meetings, and there's a little bit of backup, and knowing that you're there helps them know that when you're advocating and you say that you do know the issue, that you do know the issue. There was a, I understand you were going to foreshadow an amendment to change the motion.
Yeah, so instead of reading that council, it should read that the mayor right to you.
Right, so we'll definitely get to that. The other interesting part about your comment was that you mentioned that Brisbane City Council had raised this in their council meeting. Can you just explain what happened with the outcome of that? Sorry?
So let me get to my notes. So the Labor councillor Steve Griffiths and the independent councillor Nicole Johnston put forward a motion asking for council to release any modelling or commit to undertake it, to commit to undertake to fully understand the impacts and commit to undertaking a study to fully understand the impacts and risks to health amenity and safety of inland rail. And then that motion was not endorsed at council.
Thank you. Do we know if Brisbane City Council has in fact done any modelling?
Not that we're aware of.
No worries. And the local councillor, whose area it runs through, wasn't supporting that particular motion?
As, I don't know the voting record, but.
Councillor Lane, so councillor Griffiths and councillor Johnston have it running directly through their wards. And it wasn't supported by the majority. So it was supported but not by the majority of the Brisbane City Council.
So the councillor where it leaves Logan and goes into Brisbane, was that person supportive, or do we know? The reason why I'm asking is that one of councillor Fraser's big things is that Johnson Road, the upgrade of the bridge at Johnson Road. So I just wanted to get an idea of when we're actually looking at doing something, whether or not we have the full background and the support of our biggest neighbours. And they do have a lot of pull with the federal government, with the state government, and obviously whether or not they have the capacity to back up what we're saying. If they're not concerned about it, I'd genuinely like to know why they're not concerned, given there's such urban density on that rail line through that area. So do we want to move into, does anyone else, councillor Wilcox?
I'll just add something. With the Brisbane City Council motion that was put up, the Lord Mayor and the Deputy Lord Mayor weren't in the room for the whole discussion, and they didn't vote either.
Okay, I can't say anything to that. So are you foreshadowing that amendment? Someone was proposing to actually withdraw the motion. Was that the case?
No. It's, I'm happy for the motion to go up. I would like it, I would like the letter, actually not even just from the mayor. I would like my name on it, and councillor Bannon if he would like. And I'm pretty sure councillor Fraser would like his name on it as well. I think the more support that we can put behind this, the better. But I would like to see if we can set up a meeting with the other councillors, state, federal, federal members and stuff like that, before the letter is actually sent, to see what support that we can get, so that our voices are heard.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to lead from the chair in terms of arguments on this, so I will just say that let's go with it. Do you want to make that proposed amendment, so we're changing it from council right to?
It should be that.
To the mayor right to.
So remove the director of innovation.
So instead of the director of innovation, it should be the mayor. And councillors Bannon, Fraser and Wilcox.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Councillor Raven.
Thank you. Just a question regarding writing a letter from five or four or five people. Well, there's a council motion asking the mayor to write, that's the strongest level of support you can get. I'm sure that the mayor will include in his letter that the divisional councillors most impacted, and then name you in the letter. But having five signatures at the bottom of the letter doesn't make it any stronger, it just makes it messier. I'd say that I'm sure the mayor is happy to commit to including the names of the councillors, but all councillors support this motion. Although it sounds like councillor Wilcox wants to have a delay on the motion until after you've consulted with other councils and state members.
We haven't voted on this yet, councillor Raven, so you don't know that all councillors do support the motion.
The sentiment seems like councillors are supportive.
Councillor Karansky, sorry to interrupt you, councillor Raven.
My apologies. And similarly, I agree that councillor Fraser may well want to be included, but he's not actually here to speak for himself at the moment, so I wouldn't want to presume.
Okeydoke, we have a hodgepodge of a motion. How would we like to proceed? Why is this always happening in my committee? Councillor Wilcox, do you still, and councillor Bannon, would you still like to be included in the letter as co-signatories?
I would, because I haven't had that opportunity to put it forward. And I know that the letters have been sent, but my name hasn't been on it, I haven't been mentioned for my residents. I would like my name, I would like my signature on that letter moving forward and that sort of thing. But can we put in the motion that we do delay until after we have contacted the other councils and the state, federal members?
So we're now proposing a different emotion that says that.
Happy for the letter to get sent, but I would like to contact the other areas, because we haven't done it, no one's done it, no one's brought everyone together yet, so I would really like everyone brought together.
So item one is correct. Item two, that poster meeting with the ROCs of.
I wouldn't narrow it down, I just.
You would narrow it down? So poster meeting of other councils with our mayor and the councillors of Division Nine, Eleven and Seven, what, councillor Raven, deputy mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just point out that I think you should just send the letter, because you may not get interest, you probably will, but you may not. If you put a condition in the council resolution that they cannot send the letter until a criteria is met, that letter may never get sent, because you may never meet that criteria and you don't quite know what it's going to look like. So if the letter is to be sent, the letter should be sent. And in the meantime, it's on yourself and other motivated councillors, along with the mayor, to organise that collaboration.
Just to interrupt, the director has indicated that there is no timeframe on this, so he's willing to hold it off until such time as we say yes, kick it off.
Yeah, there you go, that's a good solution.
Yep, everyone happy with that? Okay, so there is a resolution on the board. May I have a mover? No, sorry, councillor Karansky?
Support my councillor colleagues, but I can't support councillor Fraser's name being included in the resolution for the simple fact that he's not here, hasn't had the opportunity to provide his consent. Now, I expect he'll be in ordinary council next week, and that potentially would provide that opportunity. But you're effectively locking councillor Fraser into a position that he may not necessarily support.
Thanks for that. Councillor Raven?
How about we move to defer to ordinary council? And that way, the motion can be crafted in the meantime, and councillor Fraser can let us know if he wants to be included or not.
We have a motion to defer this to ordinary council. Is there a second for that? Councillor Hall, all those in favour, raise your hands. Carried unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you very much, program leader and Mr Director. Does anyone have any questions for the director on this issue? Do you have any information for us? Thank you for your time today. I'll just give time for a changeover. Okay, so the next item is item 5.1. I'll now refer to item 5.1. Can the Road and Infrastructure Planning Manager, Mr Kamal Renawira, please enter discussions? And before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have any conflicts of interest to declare? There being none, I now refer to the Road Infrastructure Planning Manager to open discussion. Mr Renawira, you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This report is about offering off-peak public transport services, free services for seniors and veterans. The report was written in response to a resolution which is outlined in the report as well. So the obviously, public transport services are provided by Translink. It's a legislated service for designated service areas under the Transport Operations and Passenger Transport Act 1994. Logan is no different to that, so we provide, Translink provide that service in Logan as well. So the report provides the information about concessions that Translink already provides. It highlights that fifty percent of concessions are available for children, school, students, pensioners, seniors, Defence Force veterans, and so many people. I would call them as probably vulnerable passengers. So all those information is in the Translink website, you can get that information. So if that is the case, we propose that we actually put a recommendation to write to Translink and request to add this concession as well. That's the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got councillor Stemp?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to take a moment just to speak to this report, if I may. I'd like to firstly thank the council officers for bringing this to me today. I asked for this report to be prepared in response to a question senior residents in Division Ten who asked me to explore the provision of free off-peak travel for our seniors and veterans across Logan, similar to those enjoyed by seniors and veterans in neighbouring cities. Provision of free off-peak travel for seniors and veterans in other cities has been a well received and found to provide social, economic and environmental benefits to cities as a whole. As discussed in a media release in 2019, RECQ applauded the Brisbane program as a positive means to reduce vehicles on our roads, making it easier for seniors to get out and about, and encouraged them to travel outside of peak hour to help spread the pressure on public transport throughout the day. The state government draft report connecting SEQ 2031, An Integrated Regional Transport Plan for SE, South East Queensland, notes that it is neither financially nor environmentally sustainable for road traffic to continue to grow at rates and that current and the behavioural change can be achieved by practical measures like off-peak public transport fares, which lead to clear benefits of riding off-peak. Provision of free off-peak travel, off-peak public transport for our seniors and veterans in Logan could provide many benefits, including helping seniors with social isolation by making it more cost-effective for seniors to travel throughout our community and connect with their family and friends. It has been noted as a positive means to help reduce vehicle use and traffic congestion by encouraging off-peak use of public transport. And if our seniors and veterans were to travel around our city more freely, that would help support our local business, our Logan businesses, creating economic benefits for the city and surrounding cities. I would therefore like to request that the next step be for the Road Infrastructure Planning Manager to write to Translink asking them to consider and explore the benefits of providing free off-peak public transport for Logan's seniors and veterans, noting that I would like to be included in discussions relating to the drafting of this correspondence. The appropriate time, I'd like to move that the more detailed amended motion, which will be placed on the screen, be moved. Thank you.
Thanks very much. So there's an amendment on the screen that the Road and Infrastructure Planning Manager be requested to write letters to Translink detailing the following, A, B and C. Do we have a mover for the motion? No, pardon me? You can ask any question you want, Mr Mayor.
So veterans get free public transport anyway, don't they? So they don't need to be included in this?
Veterans get a number of concessions. They have access to veterans' cars and vehicles for appointments. They do get concessions on all public transport, but they may not get free public transport.
Okay, all right. I thought I saw already here. Translink currently offer free public transport people with veterans' cards.
There is a particular card, that's right, yeah.
That's the gold card, not the white card. Councillor Stemp, you moved it? Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Councillor Bannon, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That's carried unanimously excluding councillor Raven, deputy mayor. How did you vote?
Against, I'd prefer the mayor write it.
Thank you very much. So moving right along. So. Item 5.2, moving right along, report, road name change, Isaac Street to Isaac Place. That's a big, big jump, isn't it, in North McLean? Do any councillors have any conflict of interest to declare on this? There being none, I now refer to the Road Infrastructure Planning Manager to open public discussion. Mr Renawira, you may proceed.
This is a road name change because of developer wants to change the staging. And it is in the prior development area. It came to us because we have a policy in council to name, change the names. Without going into details, I can take you to page number thirteen where there is a layout. This is the superseded layout, previously approved layout. In other words, which shows that Isaac Street, which is the subject of the matter of this report, goes from Hahn Street to Saxby Street. So that's continuation of Isaac Street. But when the developer changed their lot layouts or their staging, they came up with another layout, another configuration, which is attached at page number fourteen, which actually discontinues Isaac Road, Isaac Street. So because of that, the road name change is required. So the part that is attached to Saxby becomes Isaac Place, and the other part attached to Hahn becomes Clara Street. That's it.
Crystal clear. Thank you so much. Councillor Bannon?
Thank you through to Chair. And the recommendation, it's North McLean, the report's South McLean. It's actually South McLean, isn't it, Isaac Place? And that update's got North McLean.
Mr Program Manager? We're blaming someone, okay. Let's blame, who are we blaming? Who have we got?
I'm pretty sure it's South McLean.
Thank you very much. Councillor Wilcox?
Thank you. I spoke to the two residents that will be affected by this. They are both okay. I'm just hoping it's going through in time, because I spoke to them either in late January or February that this would be happening. So I'm hoping it's happened in time before they actually move in, because one of them was building at the time. So I'm hoping it happens in time before their mail starts getting delivered. But they were both okay. Thanks.
That's the spirit. No other speakers on the motion? Can I please have a? Councillor Wilcox, you're moving the motion? Are you?
Yes.
We've changed it, haven't we? Yep, south, south, south. Councillor Bannon, are you seconding that? Good on you. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Carried unanimously. Cheers, well done. Thank you. Item 5.3, Tambourine Street, Mount Lindsay Highway intersection. I'll now refer to item 5.3. Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Smallfoot councillor Raven Selfie. There being none, I now refer to the Road Infrastructure Planning Manager to open public discussion. Mr Renawira, you may proceed. Thank you.
This report is to inform council the Tambourine Street and the Mount Lindsay Highway and Joanna Street intersection works. Obviously, the work is, the TMR, that intersection is TMR intersection. It also, the report also covers a resolution by council in December, so that's in the report as well. TMR is planning interim widening of Mount Lindsay Highway from Joanna, sorry, Tambourine Street to South Street. So that widening is making four-laning, I believe. A part of that, they wanted to do up this intersection as well. The work that will consist probably are the southbound lanes, additional southbound lanes from the intersection, and also some additional lanes going northbound as well. So which means the intersection will become a bigger intersection. So the TMR did consult with the immediately affected property owners, mainly the business owners, and in, I think, late last year, and they got some feedback. And after that, there was a meeting was organised by Division Nine councillor to attend. And Division Nine and Division Eleven councillors, TMR officers and myself attended that meeting in February this year. TMR officers got feedback from all the business owners. I think that if I can summarise the feedback, there are three areas of feedback. There is attachment in the report. The main feedback is the loss of car parking in frontage of the properties or the businesses, which is depicted in red, two red lines in the report. And also, there is a concern about the service road getting a connection to to Tambourine Street, which can probably reduce the turning movements of bigger vehicles. The third problem, third issue is the TMR is trying to offset that loss of car parking from building another car park in the TMR property, which is, there is a green circle there. That's their property around there, they are going to do a car park as well. So after the meeting, we, I spoke, I actually wrote back to TMR and asked the status of this project, and they said they are back to drawing boards. Back to the drawing board, they are doing another scoping document now. So that's where it is at. The previous plans are now superseded, that's what they said to us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Renawira. I'll now open the floor for discussion. Councillor Bannon?
Thank you through to Chair. Thank you to the Road Infrastructure Planning Manager for coming to meeting on site with councillor Wilcox. The state member was also there, Linus Power. It is a hard one for TMR, because it's, we put a report in, it was the director or member, first report we actually put in, about that intersection. It does need a major volume uplift on that, because the traffic backs up a long way. But the car park they're going to put in won't work, because you'll have to cross four lanes to get to the shopping centre. And no semi-trailer or large truck can get out of the service station. They can't get out that way anymore, they can't go south. So there is some massive issues, it's a hard one to fix. The state member's actually going to meet me on site the next couple of weeks to go through some ideas. Because I know the roads guys from TMR and council love it when an elected representative gets involved in road design. Love it. But yeah, so thank you very much for bringing it up, and I'm glad you're all over it. Kamal says, yeah, it's great. But it is a curl ball, that one. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Reverend, you have the questions from the floor? There being none. Do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Bannon, a second. Councillor Karansky, all those in favour, raise your hands. Carried unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr Renawira. What have we got now? That marks the end of your reports. Do you have any business for us?
Just want to mention about, I made a commitment last time that I will bring a report up to this committee about bus shelters. We collated all the information, but we couldn't meet this deadline. So we will be bringing that. So we will be bringing that report to the next committee.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any business for Mr Renawira? There being none. Thank you so much for your time today. We really do appreciate it. Okay, moving right along. We've got item 6.1, please. Mr Mayor, can you just pull that seat around for Ms Johnson, please, so that she's got a seat as well? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item 6.1. Can the manager of Water Infrastructure Solutions, Mr Mark Vaughan and Ms Joanna Johnson, please enter the discussions. Before we open the discussion on this item, do any councils have a conflict to declare? There being none, I now refer to the manager of Water Infrastructure Solutions. Mr Vaughan, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So through the chair, we're just going to update the council on the bio-solids gasification project. We'll take the report as read. It's a very short report. And I'd like to introduce Joanna Johnson. Joanna's our Logan Water Sustainable Projects Officer. She's been responsible for assisting us in getting the federal funding that's through Arena on this project. She's been working with the regulators on getting our licensing for this as a breakthrough technology. And she's undertaken a lot of our knowledge sharing activities on this project. So she's actually been quite out there in the water industry promoting the project. So with that, I'm going to hand over to Jo and she can take us through the project and then we'll take any questions.
Hi. So this presentation is an update on the Logan Home Waste Water Treatment Plant Gasification Facility. This will be the first of its kind in Australia and its innovation has gained not only national attention but international attention.
Next slide, please.
Thank you. Last year, some of you had the opportunity of visiting the demonstration plant at the wastewater treatment plant at Logan Home. This is where we were able to process dried bio-solids and make a sustainable and beneficial product called Biochar. The demonstration plant was successful and met all objectives and even exceeded expectations in areas like destruction of nasty chemicals like PFAS. Therefore, Logan Water has finalised the design and started construction of the full-scale gasification facility. Thank you. The Logan Home Gasification Facility is being built on the old dewatering building. This facility is planned to be able to deal with the wastewater load for up to 10 years. This is the design and construction schedule. What I'm looking forward to is the arrival of the dryers and gasifiers in August. We're on schedule and have a fully constructed gasification facility come December with commissioning over Christmas through to May 2022. These are some current photos of the start of the construction. It shows the demolition of the old dewatering building and getting ready for the new building that will house both the centrifuges and the dryers. The demolition was performed by a local Logan company called Abyss Demolition. This shows how much work that's gone into the design phase of the project. This is a screenshot of the 3D model. What it shows is how big the gasification facility is going to be and the bio-solids process management. So the bio-solids will move from the gravity drainage deck to the centrifuge where it will be get 20% dry. Then that will move to the belt dryers where it will become 90% dry. And that means the bio-solids are then ready to be processed through the gasifier where it will be carbonised into Biochar and also produce a renewable heat energy that's used in the drying process. All this means that it's going to be able to reduce our carbon emissions by around 4,800 tonnes per year. This is some of the photos of the gasifiers that are being built in Toowoomba by Pyrocal. These are some photos of the belt dryers being made in Germany. You can even see some snow in the background. That one, yeah, it's snow. So next slide, thank you. So an exciting opportunity has arisen from Biochar. With all the interest in the project, we got a lot of phone calls and emails about Biochar. So this ranged from people wanting to bring up their trailer and get a trailer full of Biochar all the way to farmers wanting to use it on their crop. Now, the reason that they like Biochar is because it not only retains water, but it has nutrients like potassium and phosphorus that's bioavailable. Another great benefit is that farmers are able to apply for grants through the Land Restoration Fund for basically sequestering or putting carbon back into the land. So this not only is a major benefit to the farmer, but also for the environment. So the other, so this actually provided an opportunity to look at a market for Biochar. Because our original business case was based on paying a subcontractor to take the Biochar away, currently lack of bio-solids at the moment. Now, we see that there's actually a possible revenue stream for Biochar and this could be up to about a million dollars a year. Farmers in the agricultural sector are currently seen as the best use for Biochar and that's because it's a known market and known uses. However, there's also other opportunities like activated carbon and the reason we're interested in that in the water industry is we use it and we know that it has a high economic value. Another opportunity that arose from the demonstration plant was that not only selling of the Biochar, but receiving other industries and utilities bio-solids. So we were asked by other utilities to take on their bio-solids and process this at the Logan Home Gasification Facility. So there's potentially two different revenue. So knowledge sharing was part of the Arena funding agreement. So we've done numerous presentations, both nationally and internationally, thanks to things like Zoom. And we'll be presenting at the National Conference in a couple of weeks called AusWater 2021. Another very exciting opportunity was the invitation to participate in the Sydney Powerhouse exhibit. And so this goes to illustrate how this innovative project is gaining national attention. And this is a wonderful good news story for Logan City Council, who is leading the way in supporting innovation and sustainability. This project is on schedule and within budget. We are looking forward to the completion of the Logan Home Gasification Facility in December and starting the commissioning phase of the project. In the meantime, the marketability study will continue for Biochar and receivable bio-solids. Another progress update will be given in three months. Thank you.
What an amazing presentation. I'll now open the floor for discussion to councillors. Councillor Stamp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say with this project in Division Ten, it's great to have such an innovative product, project in my division. It's great to hear it's on budget and it's on schedule, which is really great also, and that we're getting good media coverage for Logan. Can I just ask, it was noted in the report that there's a current study being undertaken to determine the commercial opportunity for marketing of Biochar. Will this assist with helping convince the regulator to change current regulations surrounding the management of Biochar? And what are the regulator's current concerns with regard to this product?
So DES is very much supportive of this project and so we've been able to go and get licences and that type of stuff because it is so innovative that no one's doing this. So the marketability study will look at things like phosphorus and leachability of carbon metals, which we assure that it's great. And this is actually a better product, we think, than bio-solids because it's got everything captured, like the nutrients that the farmers need, but also nasty things like PFAS and microplastics are destroyed in the product. So they're very much supportive of it.
So the regulator is kind of on board with potentially moving forward as a commercial project at this stage?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wilcox?
Thank you. In a nutshell, what is Biochar or a bio-solid for those that don't know?
Okay. So bio-solids is basically the solid waste that comes out of a wastewater treatment plant. And it's quite sticky. It has a lot of water. So bio-solids can be up to about 14% solid. So it's not the nicest products to have to deal with on farms. But it's great for farming and industry because it has nutrients and water there. What Biochar is, through a gasification process, so it heats the bio-solids up to 650 degrees and it carbonises it. So it becomes a Biochar at the end, plus that renewable energy stream as well. Biochar is very inert in the sense of it doesn't have the smell, really, really low odour. It's a lighter product, so easier to actually transport and easier to apply to soil. And the other reason farmers like it is that it doesn't have as much water in it, but it retains a lot of the water that you can put in from farms. So great for drought and yeah, great for that type of agricultural industry.
Excellent. So for those people watching along at home, essentially wastewater treatment is when we flush our toilets, sink, all of that sort of stuff.
Yes.
Perfect. So we're making money off our poop?
Pretty much.
Excellent. Just a question. Could we not have found a local company to build the belt charges? I think it's great that we found one to build the other big plant. Could we not have found someone to do the belt one?
No. No, this is really specialised equipment. And at the moment, we actually searched the world trying to find the right supplier. We actually had to send some officers going around viewing different types of equipment. And we've settled on one that's coming out of Germany. There is no local market for this.
And then just one other question. Is there any other bio-solid gasification plants or anything, Queensland, Brisbane, Australia?
No. So the reason that we got the Arena funding was this is the first of its kind. So it's, yeah, there's no one else that's actually doing this in wastewater treatment plant or gasification.
In the early stages, we did get one contact from the US that was looking at doing some similar work at a similar time, but we actually believe that was a competitive company trying to get some of the information out of the people we're working with. So yeah, it is really innovative and it's definitely an Australian first.
Excellent. So it's really good to see that Logan City Council is leading the way on this and moving forward. Great work.
Thanks very much for that. Just a quick question for me, which is, you said that you've got calls about people with trailers wanting to come and pick it up. I'm sure local gardening groups and community gardens and what have you would like like a slice of the pie if they can to get their gardens underway. Are we looking honestly only at the dollars or are we looking at the community benefit as we move forward with this project? I know that we're going to make some money off it and I think that's fantastic. But are we also going to look at the compassionate community and also struggling farmers who are very dry at times?
Yeah, I think the best way to answer that is we haven't fully firm up the criteria for that. What we need to understand is the practicality of people coming up for picking up the smaller amounts and things like that. That would be quite difficult to manage. But we can look at that and can put it in our consideration. And I suppose what we are trying to make sure is that as we start this project in December, we've got a market ready to take it. So we're meeting as early as this afternoon on that topic.
We know that Logan has such a big heart and it's the jewel in the crown of South East Queensland. We just needed to polish the nuggets. I had to do it. I had to do it. All right. Thank you so much. There's no other questions? Councillor Hall.
Yeah, a while back, I mentioned that the media should really be running a lot more stories on this because this is actually a really historically significant result that you've evolved. Like, as I said before, there's eyes across the world which are watching Logan right now simply because of this, because it, you know, it caters for one of the massive problems that we have in the world in terms of what do we do of our waste. And I'm really glad, I'm really proud that Logans can hold their heads up high and say, we are all part of this. We help make this change. And I hope it sets the benchmark for others to follow and I hope this design is set out for across the world.
Can I just ask a question? This is Logan Waste Water Treatment Plant. Is it going to be, are we moving our bio-solids from other plants down there for that to be?
Yes. So you may recall that we've presented a report showing that we're closing the Bean Lee Wastewater Treatment Plant in the coming months. Oh, sorry, in more than 12 months. But the smaller plants, we're trying to work out the best way to manage those, the bio-solids from those plants. There is the option to bring it into Logan Home if we choose to. But with those smaller volumes, it's maybe also be practical to still take them to their current disposal sites. But what I suppose is important to note that with the closure of Bean Lee and everything coming to Logan Home, that takes us to well over 90% of our wastewater flows will be going through Logan Home and processed through this facility. If I can pick up on councillor Hall's point there around the prominence of this in the water industry, it's actually, as Joanna said, we're going to be talking about this at AusWater coming up. If this goes as well as we expect it to, this will create major change within the water industry and we expect a lot of authorities would end up following what Logan's doing.
Excellent. Councillor Murphy, you had a question?
Just to add the extra comment with regards to the Bean Lee Wastewater Treatment Plant, we not only service Logan area, we also service the Gold Coast area as well. So this is across boundaries that we are servicing in this area. So congratulations. I think it's well deserved and I hope we get the recognition that we deserve. Thank you.
Excellent. Now that we've gotten through that, can I have, there should be a motion on the screen coming up that the report of the director of Road and Water, that the report of the manager of Water Infrastructure Solutions. Sorry, councillor Stamp.
Read the motion, Madam Chair. Sorry.
So that the manager of Water Infrastructure Solutions dated 20 April, be received. So there's the motion on the board. Councillor Steppe, you're moving the motion. Councillor Murphy, you're seconding. All those with in favour, that's carried unanimously. Thank you very much for your time, both of you, today. Do you have any general business for us? Do we have any general business for either of the, thank you very much for your time today. Wow, we scored through that. So that marks the end of the director of Road and Water Infrastructure's reports. Is there any general business for the director? There being none. Do you have any general business for us, Mr Director?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Outrageous. All right. Meeting closed at 12:29pm. Thank you very much, everybody.